Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. How are you doing?
I guess before it starts, I can say hello, everybody. Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Ben, you're not watching City Hall tonight?
You know, Zoom took away that option for some reason. It just disappeared out of my list, so.
Who's gonna watch City Hall's run?
I know. It's on its own tonight.
Hi, everyone. This is Sylvia. I'm on a hike, but I'm listening, and I have good reception, so I'm here.
Great, welcome. Okay, and Sylvia?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the invitation. I appreciate it a lot.
And there we go. Good evening.
Well, John, since we don't have Mr. Ben Ford watching City Hall, I see you're at least able to watch the Golden Gate Bridge and make sure it's okay.
Yes, I'm sitting on the Merne Hattens. Nice and cool.
It's beautiful up there.
All right, we are right at six o'clock. We do have a quorum, as a matter of fact, one more than a quorum. I'm just gonna check in with staff and make sure. Are we ready to go on staffs in, Mr. Obed?
Mayor, we are ready.
Excellent. All right, with that, I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular joint meeting of the Khatari City Council and the successor agency to the former Khatari Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. And after that welcome, we're gonna go to a roll call, and I'll ask the city clerk if we could have a roll call for council members.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks? We'll show Councilmember Sparks is absent. Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
And here, thank you. All right, and I'm gonna just take a second, as we typically do, and ask the city manager if he'd be kind enough to introduce the members of the staff that are here tonight.
So tonight, we have myself, of course, Damian Obed, city manager. We have our city attorney here, John Walker, and then we have our department heads here as well, which is Michael Parrish, our police chief, Noah House, our community development director, Angela Quarter, our administrative services director, and Craig Scholar, Public Works Director and City Engineer. And then, of course, I should be awfully remiss to not mention, of course, Kevin Patterson, our deputy city clerk, who is running the meeting tonight in the back end.
We would be remiss not to do that, because the only reason we're able to have these meetings is because of Mr. Patterson. So thank you, Kevin, and thank you, everybody. All right, with that, we then jump to item number three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask those who wish to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And there is perhaps the best argument for going back to live meetings when we're able to at some point. That will be a definite improvement. Until then, we're working on it. We're doing better every meeting. And speaking of meetings, let's go to item four, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions in order to introduce and or adopt it under this agenda. This is an action item. And I'll ask first the council if there's any corrections or additions to the minutes from anybody. No, I'm seeing no hand from Mr. Moore, and I can see Ms. Harvey's and Mr. Ford's faces. All right, with that, then, I'll see if we have any public comment. Let me check. We do have one attendee, so I'll ask if we can open it to public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Excellent. Thank you for that. So this brings us back, then. Again, these are minutes for the regular meeting of August 9th, 2022, and I'll ask if we can have a, if I can have a motion for that in a second, hopefully.
Move to approve the August 9th, 2022 minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Harvey and a second from Councilmember Moore. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. So that concludes that, and now I'll ask you to bear with me. I have a series of announcements that I have to read, and I'll start with A, and that's our meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen business item, and this is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as even credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or perfectly purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. You can see details on the web at katari-city.org. Next, citizens that are interested in receiving City of Khatari community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or the Android App Store, or by simply texting your zip code, 94931, to 888777. And like always, we do love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or at info@katari-city.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact us. That's 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So we're to our next item, which is item six, and this is approval of the final agenda. It too is an action item, and I'll ask the city manager if he has any changes tonight. I do have one to propose.
No, Mayor, no changes beyond, I think, the one we spoke about.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna ask for the councils, if there's no opposition. I would like to see if we can table item 10B. This is on the police military equipment to the next available meeting that we can have it, simply because this was an item that Councilmember Sparks did ask for us to discuss, and I know she wanted to participate in, and unfortunately, due to an unexpected issue, she can't be here tonight. So in the interest of supporting our colleagues and fair play, I'd like to see if we could just put that off if there's no impact, which I believe there's none. And I'll confirm that with staff. Is that problematic in any way by delaying?
There should be no problem by delaying the meeting, by continuing the item.
Excellent, excellent. That's good to hear. So then next, I'll see if there's any public comment on this.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. If you're dialing in, dial star nine. Kathleen Rivers, please go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you for tabling that. I would like to hear more discussion on it as well. So thank you very much as a member of the public. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor Landman.
Excellent, thank you. So next, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, and unless our city attorney complains, I wonder if we could combine the direction to table item 10B as well as the approval into one motion.
Yes, you can.
Excellent. With that, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Did I see a second? I thought I saw a second from Councilmember Ford. You were right on that. All right.
No, it was an attempt to be a first, but I missed it.
It was by that much. I saw it. You're both right in my screen tonight. All right, so with that, we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And yes. Thank you, everybody. So this brings us to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items, and I do have one more paragraph to read to you. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And before we start, I actually do have something extra to read tonight, and I will point out that one of our consent calendar items does have a, includes pay for one of our, for our city manager, and due to the Brown Act, it requires the city council to provide a verbal summary of a recommendation for an act on a local agency's executive salary or compensation, and that does include the city manager. So the revisions to the city manager agreement are discussed here tonight in item 8A, and so for clarity and fulfillment of the Brown Act requirement, the changes to the city manager constipation are hereby separately identified by the council prior to taking final action on the recommendation. And I will read these in order. There are three of them. First is approving a 1% COLA effective the current pay period, consistent with all other city staff. Second is amending the longevity pay structure to include an additional 4% for a total of 9% after 10 years, again, consistent with department heads. And lastly, increasing life insurance coverage to $150,000, consistent with all other city staff. So that concludes the required report. With that, we can now go to the consent calendar and citizens' business items. So I will open it up to see if we have any citizens' business or consent comments.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. We'll bring it back then. So this brings us to our consent calendar. We have four items tonight, A through E, and I'll begin as always by asking if any council member wishes to pull any item, and I see a hand from the Vice Mayor. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to pull item C, the resolution granting the city manager authority to extend the previously approved commercial cannabis retail and distribution permit for Steve Monahan, DBA MV3 at 8145 Gravenstein Highway in the commercial Gravenstein Highway zoning district.
All right, so that would be removing, again, consent calendar 8C. We'll move that then to the first item on our regular agenda, just a little bit later in the meeting. Anything else from anybody? If not, then I would be interested in seeing a motion to pass items A through E minus, excepting item C, in a second, hopefully.
Move to approve the consent calendar minus item C.
One second, then.
All right, so we have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Moore. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And yes. So that brings us all the way to item nine, which is direction on future agenda items. So I'll look to the council and ask if there's any direction on future agenda items tonight from anybody. Councilmember Harvey, I do see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I was just wondering where we were at with the, the training for the EV charging installation. Do we have an approximation on when that is going to be brought back to us? I know it's been hanging out there for a while.
We'll pass that question to staff. Just wait just a second to see if I have anybody else tonight that has anything. Not seeing any hands. I think that's a perfect opportunity for Mr. Obed, and I see Mr. Moore as well. Mr. Moore, is there something you wanted to bring as a future agenda item?
Well, we talked about it last time, and the awkwardness and the silence during particular portions of the Pledge of Allegiance, are we just gonna keep that hanging out there, and are we considering addressing that? Where we must go back to the 1954 version that was prior to Under God?
Well, I think that would be a managed matter for the council to probably, I mean, if you feel the need to ask for this as a new item, we know the process. We check in and see if that works with the city manager. Secondly, if it's not, we see then if most people are willing to hear it. I have no problems with people participating personally in the pledge or not participating, or which parts they may or may not have issues with and don't see the need to specifically limit us to any one of those things, but if that limit us to any one of those things, but if that council wants to discuss this, that's certainly fine. So I guess the question, John, do you, do you feel the need? Do you think it's important for us to discuss this as council in the future?
Well, no, it just seems like there is a elephant in the room, and people are skirting around it, and nobody wants to say anything about it. And it's like, well, do we want to address it, or do we just wanna go awkwardly about our business and, and personally, uh, say the pledge on however we feel is appropriate? Well, I'm not gonna die on the hill on this one, but, you know, it just seems, you know, more and more of us are not inclined to have that particular viewpoint on that issue, so, without agendizing it, um, just something to consider.
Right, right, right. I hear what you're saying. Probably not an agenda item, but yeah. Um, I'll leave it there. If somebody wants to make it an agenda item, I'm certainly open to it. If not, I think that's fine too at this point in time, and we'll see. I don't know if it's that awkward or not. Time will certainly tell. I, I think that trying to do the Pledge of Allegiance electronically through the different timings that we have with our video feed is the most awkward thing, and I look forward certainly to that being done. So with that, let me jump back into staff, and I'll let you speak to, I think, the question on, uh, training on our charging installations first.
Um, yeah, so we are, we're, we're planning to be starting a bunch of, um, a bunch of work on energy code items, uh, here in the next month or so, and we were just, since there was nothing imminent, um, in terms of public chargers being installed, it, it just was getting moved to kind of wrap up the conversation and everything else we're talking about with energy. We have, so what I, and I don't mean to be cryptic about it, what I'm talking about is, we have the building code update coming at the end of the year, and so we're gonna be starting work on that here any time now, and there's a, a variety of other pending items that, um, we've been tasked to look at as well with, um, including, you know, EV chargers and, um, the snowmobbing power use and, um, solar, and there's a bunch of items out there that we need to look at in the context of the building code changes. And so the initial thought was to move it as we, move it to that effort as we do that. So that's not an exact answer, but it's, you know, um, we're looking at it in fall.
All right.
I'm okay with that as an answer, as long as we don't move forward on any projects, because it's, it will be important to have that in place before we do any projects.
Right, yeah, there's no pending project right now.
Good. Okay, now that we've clarified that, we are to, item 10, this is our public hearings, uh, we do have one public hearing tonight, and that is item 10A. And this is adopting a resolution of intention and hold the first reading of an ordinance to amend the California Public Employees Retirement System contract with the city of Cattati. Uh, this is written by Angela Porter, so I'll look to see the staff presentation, please.
Great, uh, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow staff, and the greater public. So tonight's public hea- uh, hearing is for the city council, just as you said, to adopt a resolution of intention approving an amendment to our contract with CalPERS, as well as approve their certification of compliance, and lastly, to have this first reading of the ordinance amending our CalPERS contract with the city of Cattati, explicitly just removing the exclusion language for the persons compensated on an hourly basis. So for informational basis, CalPERS is the California Public Employers Retirement System, and this agency manages the pension and some health benefits for California's public employees, retirees, and their families. In June of 2020, the Audit Division of CalPERS performed a review of the application of this hourly exclusion language that is hosted within our contract. We are not the only ones, we are, there's a number of cities, agencies across the state that have this exclusion language within their contract, and so, uh, CalPERS made it an initiative to audit the application of this language within those contracts. During that audit, it was identified that we, the city, were applying the overriding CalPERS membership rules, where the eligibility is set for, uh, part-time employees that work less than full-time, so sorry, for employees that work less than full-time, they are then eligible if they work more than 1,000 hours in a fiscal year. So we were properly applying the CalPERS overriding rules and not using this language that was within our contract. So as such, CalPERS has requested that we remove this hourly exclusion from our contract and continue to apply membership based on their requirements. So in order to do so, uh, we have to amend the contract, and they require the adoption of this resolution as well as the public hearing. So if there's any additional questions, I'd be glad to provide more information.
All right, well, let's see if we have any questions from, uh, the council before we go to public comment. So I'll look to the council, I'm not seeing any hands go up on this just a moment. All right, and this is perfect time, let's see, I am not seeing anybody currently attending. I will check in with our city clerk just to confirm.
That is correct, Mayor Landman.
In that case, I will bring it back to the council, and then if there's no discussion, uh, we have a recommendation that's three steps tonight, um, if somebody would like to tackle that, I would welcome that, or I welcome any further discussion anybody might wish to have.
I would move that we adopt a resolution of intention and hold the first reading of an ordinance to amend the California Public Employees Retirement System contract with the city of Cattati.
All right. And do we have a second for that?
A second then.
All right, that is Councilmember Ford by, again, by a no's. So we have our first and second. Let's take that to a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right, that then concludes our public hearing for tonight, and leads us right to our regular agenda. So the first thing we're gonna do before we go to 11A is jump back and do item 8C, uh, from our consent cal- calendar. And so I'll ask for the staff report on that, if we can, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman, Noah House, Screen Development Director here. Uh, just briefly, I'll highlight the staff report, happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Monahan, the project applicant, is available as well. Uh, there's a lot of background in the report, it kind of spells out how we got to this point, but, uh, Mr. Monahan has been spending a significant amount of effort to try to complete the redevelopment of the, uh, small shopping center there at 8145 Gravenstein Highway at the corner of Alder and Gravenstein. Uh, and the council, um, in previous discussions granted, uh, an extension to his approval for a commercial cannabis permit to operate a dispensary at that location. Um, that approval allowed up to 90 days to be granted, um, uh, beyond the, the date in order to allow for unforeseen circumstances, and Mr. Monahan recently, uh, communicated to city staff that he was concerned of being able to meet that date, which, uh, would come in early September, and, uh, asked city staff if he could receive an additional extension. Um, and it's primarily due to, uh, getting a PG&E encroachment permit and, I'm sorry, Caltrans encroachment permit and PG&E electrical work installed on the site. Uh, he did explore options to try to get a temporary occupancy whereby he could have, um, began operating the facility while he waited on those, but there was no option because the buildings would not be able to be provided with power, so a lot of the security requirements and other mandates for operating the dispensary cannot be met. And so all that, in summary, is how we're here tonight with the resolution to ask, uh, the council to grant the city manager authority to extend this approval, and Mr. Monahan has indicated he anticipates being open around October 1st. Um, but again, with how PG&E and Caltrans are, although they have committed, um, some dates to him, as he indicated in his letter, uh, he's concerned that unforeseen circumstances could affect that, and so that's how we're here, and, and that's the item before the, uh, council this evening.
All right, well, let me see if anybody has any questions for staff. I'm gonna look to the council. And I see a hand from the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Harvey, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thi- this letter that we received and these items that are, are still holding out are almost exactly the same as the letter that we received a year ago, with committed dates by PG&E, committed dates by contractors, and assurances that they would be open in February. And with that, after a very long discussion, um, we were assured that in no way would it go past that, and I specifically, um, asked for a little bit more time, thus the extra 90 days, to, um, you know, provide that, and here we are, a year later, and these items are still kind of outstanding. Um, so, uh, I'm not sure that either the dates provided to the applicant, or the dates, you know, uh, who's ever minding them, um, that, that they can be assured, so I, I, that concerns me. Um, I also would, um, I, I'm also concerned, um, we made a commitment to the citizens of Cattati that, um, with cannabis, that the city council would be responsible, um, for that, and I am concerned that this request is taking that commitment that we made to, um, our constituents out of our hands and putting it in the city manager's hands. I, that, that concerns me, and that also concerns me that then we would be setting a precedence, and then every retail license that we have related to cannabis, the same requests would be made. So could you speak to those things?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, so with regards to, um, the reasoning or justification, you are correct, um, Mr. Monahan has struggled with PG&E and, uh, Caltrans, I think, throughout this redevelopment process of his property. Um, he has communicated with staff consistently, uh, almost on a weekly or biweekly basis, depending on where, uh, he was in the process, and I will say, uh, the elements that are under his control, meaning getting contractors on board, uh, pursuing alternative ways of finding materials, all those things, he's, he's met those and has been getting regular inspections, and the buildings are essentially ready to go from the building code side, except, uh, he has not been able to finish his frontage improvements because of the Caltrans need for an encroachment permit, and then PG&E, uh, Mr. Monahan had speak further to this, but he did indicate PG&E was, there was a little bit of concern and discussion about the design of the new pole location, where it could go, because PG&E actually does not want to have to engage with Caltrans either, uh, and so they were trying to put a, uh, their infrastructure on his property. He could speak more to that, but he did, he did identify some of those things to me. Uh, and with regards to the precedents, it's actually, uh, all of the, I would say, this, um, approval was relatively unique, and you'll recall, uh, that it was almost done through a development agreement tied to the previous, uh, anticipation of the entire site being redeveloped with a completely different project. And that mechanism, uh, the city has gone away from using as an approval mechanism, and so, uh, it's actually much more typical when the council grants approval of a cannabis, uh, commercial cannabis use, other than a dispensary, to allow the city manager to have the discretion in, um, extending that, reauthorizing it, or terminating that based on the facts that are presented to the manager. This, uh, was somewhat of a unique situation that staff, um, kind of reworked that development agreement into this resolution that has now come before the council several times, uh, in response to the things that Mr. Monahan has indicated.
But will you be then moving forward, or, uh, my concern is that if we allow one applicant to circumvent, if you will, the process for the cannabis permits, that we will be asked by all of the different, um, cannabis operations to do the same?
Well, I, I think that's a very good point to be aware of or cognizant of, um, but I will say, in my time with the city, which has been three years, um, the commercial cannabis business have, has had significant amounts of, uh, change, ongoing challenges that continuously are brought up to us by our applicants, by our, by, you know, just the state regulators, they've been retooling their entire process, and then you can read the news about what some of the, uh, cannabis manufacturers and, and cultivators are talking about with their challenges. But I will say, uh, it's a fledgling business, um, I think less than half of the permits that the council has approved have actually moved forward with a- actual business operations. Uh, and so I think some of these are just growing pains with that type of business, and I do think it's helpful to allow quick movement, meaning more administrative level things, after the initial permit is granted and all of the, uh, security and safety requirements are reviewed by the council, to allow those pivots to be made quickly in response to some of these changing winds of the industry. Um, and all that being said, I will also say that Mr. Monahan has really made a lot of effort to keep staff informed, and I know the council doesn't get to hear those, you know, we've come to you every several months, and in this case, this is, I think, the third time the council's been asked for an extension, um, which absolutely is frustrating, but I will say, he, he has committed, and, and if you go out to the property and see the level of, of construction there, it is a high-quality project. He's talking to another retail tenant who's engaged with staff to occupy one of the other suites, but a, a business type that I think is, will be very well recom- uh, received by the community. And so from a staff perspective at least, he has demonstrated ongoing, um, commitments and done everything he could to keep us informed of his challenges.
Uh, Mayor, that's all my questions. I will make a comment after public comment.
Certainly. So let me just check with the rest of my colleagues, I'm not seeing any hands going up visually or on a list. Actually, I am now. Councilmember Moore, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Um, in, in reference to, uh, Vice Mayor Harvey's concerns, um, I have heard in dealing with the state of California employees that there has been the quote-unquote silver tsunami coming with Caltrans and the right-of-way agents and the permitting people, so they are, uh, woefully understaffed at the moment, because many people, especially during the COVID, have, of course, moved on. So I can see where in a situation like this, it might take a little longer than you might normally have, um, so just a little comment on that. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, let's see, I'm not seeing any attendees again, I would like to go on a public comment, but since we have no public at the moment to comment, and I will continue to monitor that, I'll bring it back for discussion. So we're asked tonight to approve this as written, or does anybody want to make any amendments? Uh, I'm open to direction. I see a hand first from Council, Vice Mayor Harvey, then I'll go to Councilmember Ford.
I think, uh, Councilmember Ford was first.
All right, Councilmember Ford, let's go to you first then.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Um, so on the two issues that Vice Mayor Harvey raised, I'm, I, obviously, I'm frustrated to get a third request for an extension, um, but I know the applicant is as well, and I get it about working with Caltrans, um, uh, and, and PG&E, boy, two of them together, that's like the worst I could imagine. So, um, I don't have any particular issue with, with extending the time, given that it's clear the applicant has been putting in the time and money to make progress towards opening. Um, um, so, uh, on the issue of granting the authority to the city manager to extend the time, I'm comfortable with that as well with a time limit, so I'd like to put 180-day time limit on the authority granted to the, to the city manager to grant further extensions. In other words, if it, if there's gonna be more than six months, it's gotta come back to us, is what I'd propose.
All right, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Um, I am glad to see progress out there, it is looking nice. I, there are so many caveats in that letter, i- it's more caveats than, than actual reality, and the fact that there's PG&E and Caltrans involved. I, I think we're going to be in this position a long time from now, a- and that's just a reality, um, as pointed out in the staff report, of working with Caltrans and working with PG&E. So I think we're going to be here for a long time, unfortunately so. Um, I am not comfortable with giving carte blanche, um, you know, forever ability to, um, to allow this, um, to go on and on with just the city manager, um, authorizing it. I am, um, okay with this suggestion by Councilmember Ford to put a six-month limit on it, but, um, you know, so basically, it comes down to a choice. I think they were asking for 240 more days, so is it that, what's more important to them, to come back to the city manager, um, or to have the 240 days and come back to, um, the city council? Uh, I, I could live with the six months, uh, more authority for the city manager. I could live with the six months more authority for the city manager, but, but we need to stay on top of the desk.
Councilmember Ford, I see your hands pop back up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just reading the letter from the applicant. They actually only requested an additional thirty days. And so I don't want to give them thirty days as a council and require that they come back in another thirty days. So that's why I'm comfortable with this in between of giving the city manager authority for, you know, what really should be long enough to get it done, I hope.
I am good with that suggestion, Mayor.
All right, I'm going to look to see, Councilmember Moore, any comments from you tonight?
No. Yeah, I'd be surprised with a dispensary ever goes in there, but that's another issue.
Okay, so waiting to last to speak is mayor's supposed to do. I can just imagine being in the position of dealing with Caltrans and PG&E. And this is not necessarily to pick on either of them, particularly Caltrans, who we've actually worked pretty well with for years here in this city. But it is, I'm not sure which one is the movable object and which one is the irresistible force, but they are large entities that move in their own speed and time. And I can imagine trying to get something done on a dependable schedule from them is incredibly frustrating. So I'm completely supportive and understand the reasons for the delay. I do agree with Councilmember Harvey, though. I don't think it's necessarily an adversarial thing to request that this comes back in, in front of the council, simply because I do remember many years ago, and I know this is where my colleague, Council Vice Mayor Harvey, is coming from, we promised the public regarding the new idea then of dispensaries Kattati. We all agreed several times that, no, we will have these things come to us. Let me ask one question to staff, though. If, say, we agree to six months or some timeframe to bring this back, is there an additional, other than a little loss of time? Is there any cost or great problem for the applicant or the developer in doing that versus just having you be able to turn it around from the office, Mr. Obit? I would like to avoid any great financial penalties, certainly, but I don't see one, but I think it's smart to ask.
Mayor, you're asking, is it expensive for this conversation to happen again in six months? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. If this conversation needs to happen six months or three months or whatever basis it needs to happen, given the interest in making sure this comes to the council rather than just be checked off in the office, is that financially problematic? Or is it any great time problem other than that there's a two-week turnaround from meeting to meeting for the applicant?
No, I mean, in terms of, in terms of our time, it's not, no, not for the applicant. And, you know, quite frankly, if we're having a conversation again in six months, in the state of construction over there, things have gone off the rails, you know?
Well, all I'll say is famous last words. I'll give you a call. And this is not, again, to pick on the developer either, but just recognizing issues we've dealt with over the years, so with Caltrans or issues with PG&E that I certainly encountered in various other operations. It can take more time than expected. So, and with that, I agree on the quality of work that's being done over there. I'm very pleased to hear of potential good tenants that are good fits for our community and will plug gaps we have in services and goods we can offer our people. So I think that's wonderful. So with that, I think that I could live with if, I'm seeing two of my colleagues are happy with a six-month extension with the city manager and then ask it to come back to us at that point if it's still ongoing. I could, I could have gone shorter, but I can live with that too. So if there's no, I see, Councilmember Ford, you had something extra?
I was just going to propose wording, since we're actually voting on an ordinance.
Let's see, we can do a little word smithing to change that recommendation and see if our city attorney's happier.
So it would be in the, therefore be resolved. It says further resolved, that further should be struck because this is the first resolved. But at the end of number one, I would just add a sentence saying, the authority granted to the city manager expires March first, 2023.
That work for you, Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes, it does.
I'll check in with the city manager and our city attorney and encourage if you see any issues, please go ahead and open your microphone and let us know, otherwise I'm going to assume you feel that that is effective and does the job.
Yeah, the language is fine with me.
Good. And I'm seeing a thumbs up from the city manager? All right, well, I think I just heard a motion then. So I'm going to look, see if I can get a second.
I would second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Ford, second from Vice Mayor Harvey, and let's have a rule call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right, that completes this. So now we're at the beginning, the regular beginning of our regular agenda. And this would be item eleven A. And this is a resolution canceling the November eighth, 2022 general municipal election and appointing the nominate candidate to the city council. This is written by our city clerk. I'll see who's going to be presenting this. First, I just take a second. I noticed attending tonight, we have our two people who did put in for office. I want to both thank and congratulate them for their interest in being involved in the community. It goes without saying, I feel it's a very important thing personally. So I'm going to welcome Kay Rivers as well as Sylvia Lemus. And when we get to public comment, I will go to you two first. I'm sure you may have questions or comments on this issue. And, or you might want to take a moment just to say hi and introduce yourself to the community and your future colleagues here. So with that, let's go to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I'll be taking this one tonight. And, all right, so let's go back on the wayback machine. I'm not that far away back, but G fourteen, the council adopted resolution twenty-two, twenty-four, calling for the November eighth, twenty-two, general municipal election and requested that the city consolidate with the statewide general election. So basically, this is the council's formal action to delegate the election to the county of Sonoma and the registrar of voters. And I will say, actually, before I get too deep into the staff report, we also have Dev Proto here with us tonight, the registrar of voters. He was also available if there's specific questions for her. And as everyone knows, this election cycle, we have two seats up for full, for your terms. The initial nomination period ran from July eighteenth through August twelfth, but because we had some incumbents that were not refiling, that was extended to August seventeenth pursuant to the election codes. At the end of the nomination period, we had, for two seats, we had two qualified candidates, Kathleen Rivers and Sylvia Lemus. So this then brought up the question about whether we need to have an election or not. And under the election codes, the city council may consider one of the following courses of action. And one is to appoint the two qualified candidates to the two open seats. The other is to hold an election if only one person has been nominated. So only one person's been nominated in pre-seat. So those are the options. I won't read the third one because it doesn't apply in this case. And then if the council does want to cancel the election, it has to be, and make the appointments, it has to happen by the seventy-fifth day before the elections. That's August twenty-fifth, just two days from now. So this is our chance, this meeting, to do that. Otherwise, the election will be held as previously called by the council. So if the council does make appointments tonight, the deputy city clerk will not accept any filing, the filing of any statements for any writing candidates. So that's just one thing to know about. So this is actually an interesting little factoid about election laws that when, if you, when people maybe write in a candidate on a ballot, maybe they write in Donald Duck or maybe actually a real candidate, but, you know, more often than not, it's just some, you know, random name in there. They actually have to get qualified to, for that vote to count on election day. And I presume this is, this is so people writing candidates can't circumvent FPPC disclosure rules and that sort of thing. So in early September, I believe it's the seventh of September through the end of October, writing candidates could qualify for the ballot. But obviously, if the council appoints the two candidates tonight, the deputy city clerk wouldn't be accepting any writing candidates at the election. I think, just in my own opinion, and speaking for myself, I think the chances of a writing candidate actually qualifying and, and also getting enough votes to actually get a seat are pretty remote. And I don't think I've ever seen that happen, at least in my time here. And then if the council does want to cancel the election and appoint the two qualified candidates, the attached resolution would need to be adopted, which would seat the new council members as if there had been an election. So the swearing-in would happen at the normal time, which would be the first meeting, first council meeting in December, which this year is December thirteenth. And then the resolution would need to be delivered to the county registrar by five PM on Thursday, so this Thursday, the twenty-fifth. If we do cancel the election, it will avoid the cost of holding the election, which is estimated by the registrar to be anywhere between eleven thousand and thirty-four thousand. If we went ahead and held the election, that's what the cost would be to the city. Obviously, if we cancel the election, there would be minimal to no cost. Because at this point, the only actions that have occurred are the validating of signatures for the candidates that were qualified. And also for the candidates themselves, if they don't have to print statements in the election guide, then that would also save the candidates individually seven hundred and, I think it's sixty-something dollars to get the statements printed. And with that, I will just, I'll just leave it at that and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, there was a question posed by one of the, I guess, I, I don't know what title to give the two persons that have been nominated. Yeah, nominees, I guess, would make sense in this case.
One of our local citizens.
Correct. Persons would be accurate. I, there was a question posed by one of them about what would happen, whether appointing the council members or these two individuals to the, to the seats would have an impact on the council's discretion in the future if there were ever a vacancy. And I know that that question was posed to the, to the individual council members. And I thought it would make sense for me to just take care of trying to respond to that question now, if I might.
Please.
Okay, so, so here's the situation that, that was raised. When, if and when there were a vacancy in the future, if, for example, one of the council members that will remain seated after the newly elected council members are sworn in or appointed council members are sworn in, if one of those seats were vacated, you would ordinarily have the ability to either appoint somebody to serve in that position or you could call a special election to fill that vacancy. The government code, though, actually says that you are precluded from appointing somebody if it would cause a majority of the council to be appointed. So you would be forced to either leave it vacant or call a special election if those two council members were considered to be appointed. So there's a little bit of an ambiguity in the law about whether appointments made in lieu of an election are considered an appointment under the government code provision that pertains to appointments after a vacancy. But if you don't want to deal with that ambiguity and want to retain your discretion in the event of a future vacancy to either make an appointment or call a special election, the council should just go ahead and, and allow the election to proceed. And that would avoid that scenario. But it's my judgment, after not doing much research, that that ambiguity is going to exist. But there's certainly an argument that an appointment made pursuant to the selections code provision is not considered an appointment for the purposes of that restriction. So I don't know how that would play out. I'd have to do additional research, and I haven't had a chance to do it. And it might be one of those things where you just won't know until you get in front of a trial court judge to make a determination.
So just to sum it up, Mr. Barker, would it be fair to say then that the council's tools, if we got into unusual situation in the coming next four years where we lost a regularly elected council person, that they would only be able to either call a special election or choose to go with just, for example, four council members until the next regular election? That would be the two tools that would be left to them. And there might be some legal ambiguity to it, but it's possible they could be limited. Is that fair enough?
Possible that they could be limited. I, I can't give you a definitive answer at the moment.
Well, it's just good to know that it's looming out there. We can add that to our decision tree. And, you know, I'm going to jump real quickly. And first, I want to thank our registrar of voters for taking the time to be here tonight and also for how smoothly the elections have gone in the last few years since you've been working in this county. But having said that, I want to put you on the spot. This leads me to think then, the next question that seems to be important for the council to know is what sort of cost we're looking at? Because the concern is always how we use public dollars. We don't want to use them in unnecessary fashions. And the question is how high a risk potentially? And it's been suggested unofficially from a member of the community that a special election could be considerably much, much, much higher than a regular election. I wonder if you could weigh in on that? I expect the cost would be a little higher, but if you could give us an idea of what the range might look like, if it's something huge or something not so huge? I think that will be helpful for us as a council in how we approach this question.
Absolutely, and thank you for having me. I'm Diva Proto, and I'm the Sonoma County Registrar of Voters. I believe I gave numbers to, that I totally can't find right now, to the city clerk. I believe the estimated costs would be just slightly higher than the consolidated ones. One thing to note is that right now, they are very rough estimates because this is the first time we've done a consolidated election under the vote center model fully, as well as being a bilingual county. And we've also had a lot of increases in paper and everything like that in terms of costs. Kevin, would you be able to weigh in on the costs that I gave you? Because I believe I gave those to you verbally, and I can't access my system right now.
Yes, and I believe City Manager Obit has those written down?
I, yeah, I do. So it's a circular discussion.
As long as you guys stop there and don't give it to the mayor, I'm happy.
Yeah, so the bottom line is the maximum delta that we got is about ten thousand dollars between a regular and a special election. So in other words, a, the regular election that is in the packet is eleven, the range is eleven thousand to thirty-four thousand dollars. A special election range would be twenty-two to thirty-seven is what we got. So you're looking at probably at a maximum difference of an additional ten thousand dollars, but it could be something less.
I think that does help define this. So now I'll go back to questions from the council. I see Vice Mayor Harvey, you have your hand up. Please go ahead.
Yes, I want to clarify what Mr. Barker said. So this is really only applicable if we were to lose one of the elected. So if, for instance, I resigned prior to the end of my term and we had the two appointed, that would be a problem. If one of the two appointees resigned, we would, we would still have reelected, and then that wouldn't be a problem. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's only a problem if Mr. Ford, Ms. Sparks, or myself decided to resign before and we appointed. That would get us in this funny situation.
That's correct, but I do want to make clear that the problem would persist throughout the appointed in lieu of election council members still being on the council. So it's a four-year problem. It's not just, when, when your successor is...
Wouldn't it be a two-year problem?
No, it's four. It's, I believe it's a four-year problem.
Well, we have, we have three council members on one set of years and two council members on the others. So wouldn't it only be a problem?
But if these two, these, these two council members that would be appointed in lieu of an election would be serving for two years, so any additional appointee would make it three. I'm sorry, did I say two? What, I meant four?
You meant four.
Yes, I did mean four. So at any point during their, during their service, if you had to appoint... if you had to appoint a third council member, it would be more than, it would be a majority.
So it does go to four years. I thought two at first, too, but it makes sense.
Okay. It seems like we would have an opportunity to another elected person two years from now in the next election in 2024.
Well, there's a good question from the Vice Mayor. I think if I can phrase it for you. If somebody was to choose one of our members during that four-year term to leave and we were able to open up another slot on the ballot, then that would remove that for the next two years. We would only have one appointed member, correct?
That's kind of what I'm wondering.
And we're probably getting, I'm seeing a lot of scratching heads and splitting eyes. We may have gone so far down the rabbit hole, it can't be calculated adequately, but we'll see. And I see our registrar, Ms. Proto, please go ahead. I see your hand up.
You're muted.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I believe the code section says that at least we do that with the districts, that if somebody is appointed, appointed in lieu of an election, they serve as exactly as if they have been elected. So I don't know if that factors into the conversation, but it has happened before in the past where city council members specifically, we have it every year, where district members are appointed in lieu of election.
All right, let me bring this back to the council one more time, see if there's any more questions before I go to public comment. And we can always have more questions later if they arise, which they may well. Not seeing any at the moment. I will go to public comment. I would like to start, I see we have two attendees. I wonder if we could start tonight if they wish to with Ms. Rivers and Ms. Lemus, if they'd like to introduce themselves and if they have any comments they want to share in this sense, it certainly does impact them. So I'd like to recognize Kathleen first, if you'd like to speak.
Okay, hi, thank you. So I think Ms. Proto may have answered the question that I had, that I also heard Mr. Barker discussing, which was, so, so fundamentally, let me just start by saying, you know, I am very excited to be joining this organization one way or another. But, you know, I think personally, of course, I would rather have a mandate and an election and feel like, you know, know that the values I bring to the city council are aligned with my community. And I also do not want to waste money, right? And so hearing that being appointed in lieu, in lieu of an election will likely be considered not the same as being appointed if someone resigned from the position helps me to feel more comfortable with that. I really was quite concerned that, and the, the number that I had heard was three times as much for a special election, which also was quite alarming to me. So I, I'm glad to hear that it's maybe a third as much because if it's normally around 20 to 30,000 and it would be 10,000 more, that's, you know, half to a third more to have a special election. And potentially that we wouldn't even have to do that because we would have been appointed in lieu of an election instead of appointed because someone had left. So I actually feel a lot less pushing the election to try and save money because I also recognize that does require someone to resign in the next four years, which I very much hope is not going to happen. But you just never know, right? You just never know what's, what's going to happen. So I feel like my, my feelings on this are not very like, I want this, do this. I think we should do this because I really value both sides of this argument. And I, I guess I just wanted to express that. And, and also thank all of the people who jumped in in the very last minute because I just started asking this question this morning, right? After a meeting with, we can all blame Pat Gilardi for this question because she's the one who came up with it. And I was like, I don't know the answer. That's a great question. So anyway, thank you so much for all the people who have, you know, looked into this and, and tried to find precedent for this because it's certainly not, nothing I was expecting. So anyway, thank you and I'm really looking forward to working with you all.
Well, thank you as well. And it never hurts to ask a question. I will give you for free the best piece of advice I could give a new council member. And I'm sure you already know this, but it's always worth repeating. When something like this arises, no matter how good this valid source may seem, especially as someone who will be a council member in a few short months, I recommend a phone call to your city manager, Mr. Obit. He's the person that usually has the knowledge and if he doesn't, he can get it shortly. And he's the source for all of us for that sort of thing, so I encourage that highly. And it always seems like he gets a lot of phone calls on the day of or the day before a council meeting. And that's just part of the job, I think. So with that, I welcome you. And I'm going to jump now to Sylvia Lemus, if you'd like to speak and recognize you.
Hi, everyone. Hi, I'm just glad to be here. Can you hear me okay?
You're coming through great.
Okay, great. Okay, so I just want to thank you for this opportunity to be here and to listen to this item. Really excited to represent Cattani residents. I have been going around and talking to different people and I look forward to doing more of that. And also reaching out to city staff, the chief of police and others because I really want to use my experience that I, that I bring from government work, from nonprofit work, from being out the community to Cattani and see what I can do here to kind of help Cattani to, to grow and thrive in the future. Because I just, I see a lot of, a lot of potential. I see a lot of issues that we'll be facing in the future. And I just really look forward to working with everyone there. So thank you so much for having me. I'm sorry, I just was hiking and I just got back to my car, so I'm, I'm glad to be here and keep this opportunity to share.
Well, it sounds like we had perfect timing tonight. I hope the rest of your meetings for years to come work that well. So welcome. And now I will go to public comment. I see we have some more attendees tonight. Let's see if anybody else would like to speak on this item tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, let's bring it back to the council. So this is one of those ones that doesn't have really solid edges. It's hard to get a handle on, but it sounds like basically there's a small gamble, is it worth potentially spending anywhere from 11,000 to 34,000 now to, to avoid the possibility of spending something like that in the future, maybe with a little extra. I think we've quantified it, at least we know it's not as large as it might have been rumored to be. But the potential is if that unexpected circumstance happens, we could pay a small extra amount for that. Having said that, it's up to council to determine what the best course of action is. And I'm looking forward to hearing from you, starting with Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Happy to lead this off. First, I have no intention of resigning during my term, so I, I will try not to create this scenario. Second, the, the concern about, I understand the concern about wanting to have the contact with the voters that happens through the election process. And frankly, I missed that because I ran in fall 2020 when one could not knock on doors and just had to hang door hangers. So, and, and Zoom open houses are a poor substitute for actually sitting down and talking to people. But having said that, I think that the, the idea of a mandate from the voters, actually, if there are only two candidates, you won't know what that means. You know, it's completely dependent on turnout. And so I think I'm, given the, the pretty substantial cost and just thinking about other things that, I'm going to call it 20,000 as the midpoint of the range, other things that $20,000 could do in the city, I, I'm inclined to support the staff recommendation to cancel the election and appoint these two fine people to the council. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, I would concur with Councilmember Ford. I too am not planning on resigning. As, as Ben pointed out, sometimes life happens, but that is certainly not my plan. And I agree with him that, that the last election was a little bit, a little bit crazy because you couldn't get out there. But, you know, as far as a mandate, I would say a mandate really would only be there if, you know, there were a whole bunch of candidates out there and, and the selection was there based upon that. I, I agree with Ben. If, if you get to check two boxes and that's all there is, is two boxes, it just, you know, it, it, it's a, it's hard to say. So I, I too would support the staff recommendation. And I look forward to being able to take those funds and do something in the community with those funds. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'm going to see if anybody else from the council wishes to speak. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. And later the information coming out with, from Mr. Barker and the fact that it's an appointment in lieu of an election for candidates that have qualified for that, I'm comfortable supporting the council recommendation on this.
Okay, I think I see the direction we're going. And I'm glad to see it because that's kind of what I'm thinking too.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing. I, I think the way you characterized it was more accurate than what I've heard some others characterize it. I'm not certain one way or the other, how it would play out in the future. I think there's a possibility that you would retain the ability to make an appointment if there's a future, if there's a future vacancy. I just, I, I don't know at the present time. I think there's a decent argument that you could prevail, but I wouldn't say it's likely that you'd be able to make an appointment in the future.
Well, I think in normal life, I'd be positive and hope for the best. As a mayor, I'm going to assume the worst outcome and try and keep that in my judgment. But even with that, I will say I'm uncomfortable with this. I just can't see essentially putting a significant, significant enough amount of public money that isn't bringing any real benefit back to us. If there was some huge risk, if there was truly some truly large cost for a special election down the road that would have been incredibly problematic and punishing, then maybe it was worth considering as an investment, insurance, if you will. But the risk looks small from what the registrar of voters is able to share with us. And unfortunately, I agree with my colleagues, there's no mandate to be had when there's two people running for two slots. And I feel your discomfort with that. Truth be told, 13 years ago, I was appointed my first year and I felt very much the same as you, so that's natural. But I'm sure the good news is you will have four years for the citizens of Cattani to get to know you, to get to see how hard you work and what you're able to do for the citizens of Cattani, at which point hopefully you'll run a second time and have a chance to get that win and being able to say, I'm elected and not selected. But till then, that doesn't stop any from, buddy from doing good work. So I agree with my colleagues. I would like to see us just appoint and save the public some money. So with that, I'm looking for a motion.
I would move that the city council adopt a resolution cancelling the November 8th, 2022 general municipal election and appoint Kathleen Rivers and Sylvia Lemus to the city for full four, four-year terms.
And I'm going to jump over to Councilmember Moore. I see your hand up.
I was just going to make a motion, but you got to be pretty damn quick with Vice Mayor Harvey here, so.
I think you're set to make the second. I think you got the second if you want it.
Can I interrupt with one procedural point? In the resolution, the beginning date of the term is never named. And I wonder if that should be in the resolution somewhere. I know it's in the same manner as if they were elected, so, so that's implied, but.
Let's ask Mr. Barker.
I don't think it's critical that it be included in the resolution because it's sort of implied by the statute. So I, I think the wording just follows what's in the statute. Thank you.
Thanks.
Never hurts to ask these things. All right, so with that, we have a motion. We have a second. Let's go to a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right, that carries for, for I with one absence and completes that item. That brings us now to item 11B. And this is our COVID-19 temporary economic development response phase three. And let's see, this is written by our city manager. I'll see who our staff report is from tonight.
Mayor, I'll lead on the phone as well. So, all right, so this action before the council, or proposed action before the council tonight is a, is to rescind Resolution 2020-59 and adopt a new resolution to transition city-supported businesses coming out of COVID. And so just real quick background, back in May of 2020, the council adopted an, an original resolution to try to respond to the unprecedented impacts that COVID was presenting to some of our businesses. And by May, we didn't know a lot. But then again, in September, the council adopted a second resolution. And this is Resolution 2020-59 that we're rescinding tonight, or proposed to rescind tonight. And by September of 2020, we had a much better idea of what the actual impacts were and where we could best help the businesses that were trying to address their COVID impacts. And the resolution that was adopted at the time, this is again, 2020-59, it, it extended a citywide parking reduction and flexible uses of outdoor spaces. It expanded the allowances governing the uses of outdoor spaces and, and told agreements. So basically, it suspended any agreements that were running, like development agreements and also building permits, things like that, so that they didn't timeout during COVID when everyone was basically putting everything on pause until they figured out how they wanted to move forward on things. So there's a variety of actions along those lines. There's more detail in the staff report. But in addition to that, the city council also allocated funds to help our outdoor, our business, our restaurant businesses, specifically with outdoor spaces. And the way that, that moved forward was purchasing tents and installing the tents and the barricades and the platforms in areas where we needed them to level the ground for accessibility. And that was all included as part of that action. So today, so some of the tents over, over the last two and a half years, some of the tents have been removed by the request of the business owner, but we still have most of the tents out there. And I think everyone knows where they are, but in case they don't, we still have tents adjacent to Cattani Coffee. We have a tent in front of Down to Earth Cafe in Trade Winds. We also have a tent in front of Redwood Cafe. And this is all in our, the core downtown area. We also have a tent in Jam, Jam's Joy Bungalow in their parking lot there, as well as the parking lot of Flagship Tap Room off of the plaza. And then finally, in the back patio area of Grab South Brewery off of Redwood Drive. So originally, when these tents were installed, we communicated to all the businesses that received tents that once, once the council took action and the original trigger, the thought on the original trigger was rescinding the declaration of emergency for COVID, that when that, when the council pulled the trigger, it would be a six-month window of time that we would give them to, you know, to remove the tents at any time in that six-month window. So given that the declaration of emergency, it's still unclear exactly when that declaration of emergency would be rescinded. There's still statewide and county declarations, so it may go for a little bit longer yet. But, but it just, it just appeared to staff that some of the other things that have, that have been, that were part of that initial action, such as tolling agreements, suspending building permit expirations and things like that, are no longer useful. And so we should come back and, and just rethink what we're doing in terms of the ways that we can best help businesses. Prior to this meeting, we did reach out to all the businesses that had tents and asked them what they thought of them and, you know, if they were interested in moving to a more permanent outdoor space. And I would say across the board, all the businesses were extremely grateful to the city for providing the tents. And, um, uh, maybe about half of them said, you know, we would, we would like to keep them, you know, as long as you guys are willing to leave them out there, um, but ideally at least through this coming winter. Cause some, this is restaurants we're talking about, so some people are still uncomfortable dining indoors. So if, um, you know, if we could have them through the winter, then that would be great. Um, nobody really indicated a strong, um, well, at least a clear desire to create a permanent outdoor space. Although some of them sort of hinted that they might be interested in that. So the thought is, um, with regard to the tents is that if we were to, um, if we were to start that six-month clock, September 1, then that would, um, leave the tents, I, you know, potentially as long as through the end of February, um, of 2023. So get them through the, at least the bulk of the winter. And, um, uh, the complication, of course, is if someone wants to transition to a permanent outdoor space, we haven't, we haven't adopted, uh, the council has not adopted permanent outdoor space design guidelines. So that could create a timing conflict. So, um, sort of the, the conclusion we came to, the best approach would be to kind of in summary now with the new resolution that's before the council tonight is remove the tolling of agreements, remove the building permit, um, suspension, time suspensions. But those run again. Um, as I said, they're not really that useful anymore. People, businesses resumed, um, in those areas. But with regard to tents, um, set September 1 as, as a, uh, as sort of starting the clock. And then that would allow the tents to stay there for as long as, um, the end of February of next year. But, um, the caveat being that we would continue to follow up with the businesses on, um, if they have a desire to move to a permanent outdoor space. And if they do, then we would, um, uh, we would, uh, move forward with, uh, we, well, basically we would move forward with coming back to the council to say, hey, you know, some businesses, businesses have expressed an interest of going, going to a permanent outdoor space. So, um, the resolution tonight that we're talking about tonight would allow the city manager to continue to extend the time on those particular businesses that want to move to an outdoor space. Um, and then we come back to council to have a conversation about what do those design guidelines, guidelines look like? Um, do we want to do any, um, fee reductions or anything like that? Um, to assist those businesses, but that would be a subject of a future conversation. So tonight it would just be essentially setting up two tracks. One is we set the six-month timeframe. That's just removing because they're not interested in any sort of permanent outdoor solution, which is probably half or maybe more of the businesses that have tents currently. And then any businesses that express an interest to move into an outdoor space, they'd be on the, what's framed here as a second track where the city manager that would then have the ability to extend that six-month. Um, but we would be, then staff, that would, then staff would then be coming back to council with, um, uh, additional conversations about fees and design guidelines. So, um, just to frame the conversation for the ones that do want to move to a permanent outdoor space. Um, and that I think is, it's in a nutshell, but I would be happy to answer any questions or follow up on anything that is unclear.
All right. Well, let's see if we have any questions from the council and I'll take a second. And I see a hand from the vice mayor. Why don't you start us off?
Thank you. Uh, Damian, are you thinking that these requests for outdoor areas, are they, uh, desiring them to be in the parking spaces or are we talking about on the sidewalks?
Oh, yes. Um, that's why I characterize it as a permanent outdoor space because, um, you know, looking around, it seems like, um, the evolution of a parklet has become, you know, um, broader. It could be, um, something on fully on private property, like flagship pro, flagship taproom, for example. That's a hundred percent on private property. Um, or it could be on, um, could be on public property. So developing, you know, what we would be looking at, and we were looking, um, before this meeting or in the run-up to this meeting, we were looking at, like San Francisco is an example of where they moved away from parklet designs to what they called outdoor space approvals, um, which could be in the public right of way or partially in the public right of way, or it could be in the private, um, on private property somewhere. So it could be any, any combination of those, but that's, that's what we would be looking at and, and, um, you know, if there's interest by the businesses coming back with some proposed design guidelines along those lines.
Okay. And my second question, um, i- in the financial statement, it says that, um, really the only cost at this point, um, is that some of the traffic barricades are rented. Um, do you have an approximation on, on what that's costing us?
Um, I, off the top of my head, but they're not that, they're not really cheap. Um, so we, when we first did this, we, um, we bought a lot of them. It's basically as much as we could reasonably store after this is all over with at the courtyard and find useful in the future. Um, but we did have to rent some because we didn't want to have just a giant pile of barricades. Um, and I, I don't know, Craig, if you happen to know what that rental cost is. If you're.
Yeah, we, we have, um, we originally had 20 rented and it was costing us about, uh, 2,600 bucks a month. And we've given 10 back, so we just have 10 out there now. So I think it's around $1,300 a month, which is, it adds up.
Right. Over time it adds up. Okay. Thank, thank you for that. I just wasn't, it wasn't clear and I wanted to be, you know, for leaving them out there. What, what kind of cost were we looking at? So thank you for that.
All right. I, I think Councilmember Ford, it looks like your question was answered. I see your hand went back down. Very good. Not seeing anything from anybody else. So we do have an attendee. Why don't we go to public comment and we'll bring it back to the council.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. As speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you. So bring it back for discussion. Any further discussion from anybody? Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated a couple of things. One, that, um, they reached out to all the businesses and had a discussion to see kind of where they were at on this. I appreciate that. And secondly, I like the concept of having, um, the two tracks. Those people that, you know, kind of want to hang with us and see what the guidelines are and uh, based upon our, our previous item that we had, knowing that construction things and getting things in place and permits and all that stuff takes a little bit of time, um, that we're willing to work with those businesses. Um, so I, I appreciate, um, all that work that was done to do that. And I'm definitely in support of this and, uh, yeah, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. Um, like Vice Mayor Harvey, I'm generally in support of this, uh, out, the plan outlined in the staff report. I, um, my only question is about the timing of the, the ending of the six-month clock. I know we've had dry marches lately, but I'm kind of hoping that doesn't continue forever. I would actually propose that we move that ending time to, uh, April, to April, sorry, March 30th instead of, March 31st instead of February. A- anyway, April 1st instead of March 1st, just to get, get them through a little more of the winter before they have to change plans completely. And then the second, um, i- issue about phase two, when, when any businesses say, yeah, I want to work on creating a permanent outdoor space. It, there are so many different issues raised by the different possible placements of that outdoor space. As Vice Mayor Harvey pointed out, you know, the, the ones that are on the street and taking up parking raise several sets of issues and the ones that are on private space, but in parking lots that hold parking that we required for that use, that's still an issue, you know, that we, so feels like there's a ton of work to do to, to get anywhere near a permanent, um, program. There's issues, I know in some cities, uh, businesses that want to maintain a parklet for their business's use have to pay some rent to the city for that space. There's just all kinds of issues to raise. So I think that's going to be a big project if any of them, um, want to uh, pursue keeping the space at their own expense. Thanks.
All right. Now we'll go more time and see if any of my other colleagues want to speak. If not, I'll just say, yeah, I am generally supportive of this. I have noted recently, uh, we recently took a day trip up to the city of Heelsburg and I noticed I walked through their downtown, many examples of these kind of new outdoor spaces. I don't know what the current name is. That continues to evolve, but they varied a bit. Sometimes they were on public property. Sometimes it looked like it might've been more private. Some of them did take a few parking spaces, some less. One thing they had in common that I noticed is that they didn't seem to dominate or block the whole area. They were well-done, level and very attractive. They weren't all a hundred percent homogeneous, but there was clearly some design standards. So I think that I'd be supportive of this, but I think it would really re-important and there'd have to be a commitment for it to be done right. Because Councilmember Ford hit the nail on the head. This will be an important discussion with the community. Um, because parking is at a premium in our downtown. It has been for years. There's, it's like water. There's not more of it defined. So there's a lot of different, there might be some businesses that are fine giving up a space or two, but maybe that impacts some that don't want to give that space up. So I think it'll be, as it should be, a full and nuanced discussion with the entire community to do that. Nevertheless, I, I do see it working and happening easily, at least with some of these smaller parklets that maybe take a space or two and combine with the proviso that it's something that enhances our downtown, makes it even more desirable and better for the people that live here that might visit here and the businesses, uh, that work here. And, and I do think we can get there with this. So with that, uh, if there's no further comment, uh, let's see, we have had public comment, we have had discussion. I think I'm up to a motion. And I see the, the vice mayor jumping right in. Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Um, Mayor, before I make a motion, um, do we have concurrence on, um, Councilmember Ford's, uh, changing the timeframe from six months to seven months?
That's right. Thank you for reminding. Let me look real quick from staff, any, and, and a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Will be any issues from staff on that? The extra month problematic in any way for us?
Um, no, I mean, it's just a, you know, it, from a city perspective, it's just an extra month of potential rentals for barricades, but that's, you know, it's pretty nominal in the big picture.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So with that, I'll look to my colleagues. Is there any objection to changing that date from anybody? I'm not seeing any shaking heads or thumbs down, anything like that. With that, if you want to include that in a motion, I think that works for the council and the staff.
Thank you for that. Yeah. Thank you for that suggestion, Ben. I, I was a little concerned about that. So I, I appreciate, um, you adding that because I, I was on the same wavelength there. So with that, um, would a move that the council, um, rescind resolution 2020 dash 59 and adopt a resolution to transition city support, uh, of businesses and adding that it changes, um, from six months to seven months to get us through March. Does that clear enough? Damian? Okay. That's my motion. Stick into it.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion in a second. Uh, with that, we'll see if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody. So that carries, uh, four in favor and one absence. And brings us now to item 11C. We have two items actually related to the League California Cities, uh, or Cal Cities as they are now known. And this first one is appointment of a voting delegate and alternate or alternates to be 2022 League of California Cities Annual Conference. And I'll ask you, we can have our staff report, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, um, uh, this one feels a bit redundant, but basically, um, the short version is the annual, the league's annual conference, um, or Cal Cities now, I guess, and their annual conference is coming up here in September, early September down in Long Beach. And, um, they require that each one of the member cities appoint a voting delegate who will vote on conference resolutions at the annual business meeting. The annual business meeting is, um, slated for Friday, September 9th. And, um, the league bylaws also provide that the city council may appoint, uh, city official to serve as a voting delegate or an alternate if there is not a sufficient number of council members in attendance. And, um, uh, just so everyone knows, uh, currently attending this conference are Vice Mayor Harvey and myself. So that's, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. And I see, I was gonna sum it right up, but we have a question already. Councilmember Ford, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Um, so this, this, uh, conference is entirely in person that's here, right? There's no virtual component? Okay. That's mainly relevant to the next agenda item, which has virtual in the title, I think, as a holdover from previous years. Makes the choice easy.
I hear your voice. All right. Any other questions from anybody? Not seeing any hands go up. Let's check and see. Uh, I do see an attendee. Let's see if we have any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, I'll bring this back and just since we have two new soon-to-be, again, I'm struggling with that title. Mr. Barker is right. Councilmembers in the audience, I'll point out historically for years, this has been something that generally the mayor gets to do to go to this annual conference. But the practice for many years here, at least the few times I've been mayor and many of our other mayors is we've generally, uh, asked and had the support of, uh, Vice Mayor Harvey to represent us because of her strong participation in Cal Cities over the years. That is the case this time. She's now the North Bay Division President, uh, and she's going to be there. I understand the rules do allow an alternate to be a staff member, uh, if necessary. And amazingly enough, we have our vice mayor and our city manager are going to be there. You could see perhaps where this is going. Uh, so, so with that, I, I'm happy once again to have Council, Vice Mayor Harvey representing us. Um, I wouldn't mind the trip, but I think her expertise serves us well down there and I, and I like the idea of that even better for the city. Councilmember Ford?
Uh, if we're ready, I was going to move that the council appoint Vice Mayor Harvey as our delegate and city manager Obed as our alternate for the conference.
All right. I'm gonna look and see. All right. That's set, that settles the question and more discussion. We have a motion from Councilmember Ford. A second from Councilmember Moore, uh, to assign Vice Mayor Harvey and City Manager Obed. Who fortunately enough happened to be currently registered for this. Uh, so that's, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford? Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And yes. All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, so related to that, and this is something for numerous, you'll be seeing most years, is we are required at every time we have these meetings to give direction to our voting delegate for any virtual, and let's cross that virtual out, for any business that may be coming up. And we do have a recommendation I had to discuss and provide direction to our voting delegate for this business meeting. So I'm gonna see if Mr. Obed is gonna be presenting this for us.
Yes. Thanks, Mayor, and, uh, apologies about the virtual thing. Uh, we will be there in person. And, uh, I guess, you know, more, uh, more specifically, Susan will definitely be there to vote in person. Um, so the league, um, annual business meeting is scheduled, as I mentioned before, Friday, September 9th. And, um, there are some proposed bylaw changes, uh, to Cal Cities bylaws that are on the docket and they're included in the packet tonight. So at least two-thirds of the general assembly must vote in favor of the proposed bylaw amendments in order for them to take, take effect and, and, um, and they seem fairly innocuous in cleanup, at least in our review, but, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this item. Thank you.
And I'll just jump and see if Vice Mayor Harvey has any comments, uh, regarding those as well, because I'm sure she was deeply involved in them.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Uh, just to give people a little bit of background on this, it used to be that this governance body apparently had gotten a little bit large and unwieldy because the problem was if you look at the fine print, there was anybody that was on the national, um, could join. And so what ended up happening was there was all these, this, these people that joined the national. And so what ended up happening was there was all these, this, these people that joined the national and then they were on this board. So they kind of took a look at that last year and, and kinda brought it in a little bit and, and kinda cut down and kinda fine-tuned the caucuses to get a more manageable and diverse group to do their business. And these changes here are just a little bit of fine-tuning of that, you know, adding a couple more to kinda round, round that group out. So it's, it's an evolution and, and they're really striving to have a committee that kinda looks at these bylaws because much as we've noted, even with mayors and councilmembers, sometimes the bylaws, if you will, kinda get written and then they kind of sit there and don't, they stagnate a little bit. So it's really good that now they're moving forward and, and actually putting a committee in place to look at these things and kinda keep fresh the, the bylaws. So that's what you're seeing here. So hopefully that helps. And I'm here to answer any questions, too.
So I'll ask my colleagues if we have any questions for the City Manager or for Vice Mayor Harvey on this before we go to public comment. Going once, twice, maybe even three times, not seeing anything? Let's go to public comment, please, with this.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, so let's bring this back. So we have two bylaw changes. You'll see them listed on page 139 in the middle of the page. The full bylaws with red line changes are also in Attachment One, beginning on page 143. So the question before us, if the council's comfortable giving direction to our representative to support those or if there's any questions or concerns. I'll ask if anybody is, has any questions or concerns to raise your hand, let me know. Councilmember Moore?
I would just support the proposed changes to the bylaws for our voting delegate.
All right, am I hearing that as a motion?
I don't know that we need one, but if you do, then it is.
That's direction. Excuse me, you're absolutely correct. So we're suggesting that direction. I'm seeing some nodding heads. Any other thoughts? No? All right, that's the direction to our two representatives and I thank you both for being down there. I hope you have safe and pleasant travels and a good time. So with that, let's see, that takes us, that completes our regular agenda and leads us now to the time we've been waiting for, and that is the City Managers' Report. No pressure.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I have a time everyone's been waiting for, but I'll try to make it exciting if I can. So a couple of things are coming up that I wanted to let everyone know about. One is that we are doing a, another coordinated, so a year ago, we did a coordinated Hilo evacuation test with Rona Park and SSU. So that's coming up again on August 31st. So we're just starting to get the word out to everyone that August 31st, we're gonna be doing the Hilo sirens right around 4:00 PM. And this will be, again, coordinated with Rona Park and Sonoma State. I do have a, on a totally different topic, I have a, I have a update on the drought. So one of the questions last meeting was the 30% reduction in Water Agency water usage. And we did get our well, our well production data in too, and that's consistent with the Water Agency reduction. So it's, so we actually are at a 30% reduction overall from 2020. So, you know, our thinking, our thinking is that obviously some of it is water conservation, so people are doing a great job with that. Some of it is probably also due to people going back to work and they're not at their house all day long using water. So that, that's probably a component of it as well. But the combination of the two are, are, are great. So we're, in terms of our reservoir levels, we're doing, I mean, we're not doing great. I won't say we're doing great, but we're doing better than we were last, in last year's drought. So, so that's good, good news. Um, just an update on the Athena statue. So that is now, if you haven't noticed, it is now removed from La Plaza Park. The sculptor who, who made it has removed it and has that, has possession of the sculpture and is gonna be repairing it. We don't have an ETA for return yet, but hopefully soon. And then on public works projects, we have a lot of stuff that's just about to start. So another thing is gonna be coming to the council in the very near future. In addition to the Pathway Project and the Window Project, you, you guys have already seen the Pathway Project, Window Project, the Mosaic Seat Wall Project, all those are, and the Slurry Seal Project, over five miles of slurry seal and street repairs. Those are all, they've all been approved by the council and they're out there getting ready to get going. So another one that's just opening next Tuesday is the West Sierra Sewer Main Replacement. So this is one of the sewer mains that was slated in our sewer master plan for replacement from Olaf up to Water Road. And so that's, that's gonna be opening next Tuesday. And so I expect at the next, probably the next council meeting, you'll be seeing that for a potential award. And of course, the idea is to get the sewer main replaced prior to the Quick Start Project, which will fall on its heels in, in the spring, once the weather allows. So a lot going on with projects right now. You haven't, you don't see anything in the field, but lots about to break loose. And housing element, so the house, and we've been talking about this for a while. It's just taking longer than we thought to get the draft ready for public review. With that, we do expect that to be published soon for a 30-day public review to get more public input on this. And once published, it'll be available online and in person at the Community Development Department. And we expect early September, it'll be out and ready for public review. So that's coming up soon. So in recreation, we have, this Friday, we have our monthly Kids Night Out events. And this is where we're offering care for children ages five to 12, while the grownups can have a child-free event to run errands, go on a date, or just relax for a few hours. And this is pizza, pizza dinner, crafts games and a movie. And it's from five to nine this Friday. It's called Kids Night Out, but it really should be called Parents Night Out. Anyway, that's coming right up. And then we also have one more movie in the park this summer, it's taking place on Friday, September 23rd. So about a month away. This will also coincide with our first annual Katati Car Show in La Plaza Park. And of course, the movie we wrote that we're gonna be playing after the car show is None Other Than Cars by Pixar. So we're gonna have food, popcorn, coffee for sale, but also people are welcome to bring their own food to the park and the car show's from five to seven. And the movie will be, once the sun goes down, probably about seven fifteen or seven thirty, somewhere along those lines. And there are also plenty, lots of other stuff this fall, including children's theater programs, more Kid Night Out events, Katati Candyland is coming up on Halloween. Online pet costume contest. So if you have some, some Halloween costumes for your pets, and I know you do, Councilmember Moore, get it ready or go buy, go out and, go out and buy one because we're gonna have a contest this year. And then Thanksgiving Break Camp is coming up. And then last two things I'll mention is that we have our Free Zoom, the Gold Class, starting up again. This is in partnership with SRJC. And then Farmer's Market continues through September. So is it? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That seems like a lot. Thank you. I'm gonna go right to Councilmember Moore. I think he's ready to start sharing some pictures with us, maybe?
I was just gonna ask if the pet costume contest has been cleared through the SPCA? Cruel and unusual.
Let's love it.
I'm reminded of that picture that shows a wolf in a campfire millions of years ago, thinking it's warm in there and there's food, what could go wrong? And they cut to the picture of a small, small dog with a small stout wearing a knit outfit and looking confused. But nevertheless, I think it's a good idea and I'm sure, and the animals will love it that they get to be around other people and other animals, and that's always a good time for, at least most of them. So excellent. Well, thank you, Mr. Obin, and thank you, Mr. Scott, for your service. Ahead of time, it sounds like it's gonna be a very busy couple of months, but we look forward to seeing all those good things coming in. So thank you. All right, so we've had the City Managers' Report. Let's jump now to the City Councilmember Reports. And I'm just gonna look to see, anybody wants to toss their hand up, like, for example, Vice Mayor Harvey just did. Please go ahead.
Well, there you go. I only have a couple of things. The first one, I would have let Laura do this, but since she's not, we had our two-by-two-by-two meeting with Katati and Rona Park. And the big thing there was, guess what, school's starting. I think you, you've kind of all noticed that now. And the other announcement that they made was the new president at SSU, Mike Lee. And there will be an opportunity to meet him. I'm sure that Ben has probably already met him, so they're excited to have him start. Katati Rona Park School District said they had a great summer school session. They actually had 600 students for summer school, which was really good. And it was also mentioned that on 10/23, that there will be a creek cleanup with rotary. And that's all from that. And then today, this morning, I had the honor of speaking at the press conference for the Conservation Corps North Bay with the state and with Zero Waste Sonoma. The Zero Waste Sonoma with Conservation Corps was able to get a state grant for $2.5 million to help with food recovery and creek cleanup. And it's going to allow them to put through their programs another 84 individuals and give them job training. And today was also very special because it was the first time they were able to utilize the new truck to pick up food to be able to, to reuse it. So they were going to pick up their first delivery at, at Amy's and, and bring it so that those, those meals would get reused. So we're making baby steps on 1383 and this new group of candidates will be learning more recycling and, and food processing. And it was a great event. They also had one down in Marin, too. But it was, it was wonderful to see that. And the students that spoke, they were really great. They loved this opportunity and it's just wonderful that we have this right here in Katati. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. All right, I'll look to the rest of my colleagues. I'm not seeing, I am seeing. Councilmember Ford, please go ahead.
Well, just real quick, the Russian River Watershed Association Board is meeting this Thursday, so I'll have more to tell you next time. But that, this year's Creek Week, when we have historically done our own creek cleanups is Sep, is in mid-September, September 17th to 24th. So Susan, when is the, the creek cleanup that you mentioned? You know?
Um, they mentioned October 23rd.
Hmm, okay, so they're not tied into that week?
No, I guess they're not tied into, and that's with the, the different rotaries.
Okay, okay, I'll check in with that. Okay.
Yeah, I would check with Gerard.
Okay.
He was the one that mentioned it.
Okay, thanks. That's all.
Thank you for that. I wonder, I don't know if this would be helpful or not, but since you have two organizations working on the same goal, put a little time between them, not that much. I wonder if mutual advertising and marketing together, and that might be smart. Just a suggestion, maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, but that's a good thing. Creek Week's always been a big thing here in Katati. We have a strong history of that with the creek critters and those backaways. The result's very good for the community, so we're all appreciative of those efforts, no matter who's involved in them. So with that, I'm not seeing anything else. I have nothing to report to this particular meeting. So we'll move on from City Council Reports to, now we're to public comment on non-action agenda items. And we do have one attendee still, so I will see if any, you have any public comment on non-action agenda items?
Thank you, Mayor Landman, speaking to our attendees tonight. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Kathleen Rivers, please go ahead.
Um, so hi, I, I, this may not be the right time. I didn't realize what I wanted to ask about was actually on the consent calendar. Is, is it okay to ask a question about that or is it too late?
Well, typically speaking, especially since you're going to be a councilmember, yeah, I gotta hold you to the letter. That, that was, we had the chance to speak to that earlier for consent. And this is for items that are not, are non-action items. You'll notice there's a lot of things that are listed as non-action. And this just gives people a chance to speak to any of those.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask my question later then. Thanks.
Perfect, thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Very good. All right, so let's bring that back. We're to item 15, and I'll ask the City Manager if we have any information received after the agenda was posted?
Uh, we do not, Mayor. Nothing that would be already disclosed tonight.
Okay, beyond what we have in the packet, very good. So with that, this takes us to item 16, adjournment. So with no objection from my colleagues, we are turned at 7:51. Thank you, everybody. Good to see you and I look forward to seeing you next time.
Good to see you all. Bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you.